In the city of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www dot city of Alpine, a one word, dot com for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, section five, five, one dot oh four, three, Texas government code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council any agenda item after determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting comments and questions, rules and procedures are listed on the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to Megan Andrum, Director of Finance, at dot C I dot Alpine dot text, T X dot U S. If you have a written petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All I all names wanting to, I'm sorry, all names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be queued up and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor may call those individuals one at a time and our meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as our exiting signup sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name, first and last, along with the ward you reside in or business interest in. If you do not live in or own property in the city, please state that that in your emails. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and or city council members may call a point of order to stop the personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in the meeting, you may be barred. And I call this meeting to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise. Pledge of Allegiance.
Here is the flag of the United States of America. Considered a republic which stands one nation under God. With liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum. And the notice was posted at five P M. On May fourteen, twenty twenty.
Thank you very much. And now we'll have the public comments. City Secretary, will you keep a other time on that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, this is Megan, and I did not receive any emails prior to the meeting, nor have I received any at this time for public comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and we don't have any presentations or recognitions today. So we'll go to reports. I don't have a report. City Attorney, your report, sir?
I don't have Rod on the meeting yet. Uh, wait, he just logged in. One second.
And then Megan, we can go ahead and screen share his his report as well. Thank you.
Okay. Need to get on?
Yes, you one second to get unmuted for him.
Okay.
Takes a minute to scroll through everything. Rod, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I was having some trouble over here, too.
I do have your presentation being shared.
Are we up to that point on the agenda yet?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor and Council. The, is my camera on, Megan? It does not on my screen.
No, I'm not showing you have video.
Okay. Well, I should, but anyway, I'll go. I'll go forward with my presentation. Mayor and Council, the last session of the Texas Legislature was not very friendly to cities. And the governor and lieutenant governor wanted to beat up on cities and blame us for all the problems in Texas. Of course, the cities of Texas are more Democratic than Republican in the big cities, and I think that might have something to do with it. Regardless, the property tax relief was high on their agenda, and they passed S B two Senate Bill two. Senate Bill two changed the way that cities and other public agencies can raise taxes. Before the Senate Bill two, the city of Alpine or Brewster County could raise taxes up to eight percent a year without going to a rollback election. A rollback election is where the voters can try to rescind or change the taxes, the tax increase. And so if you go to the next slide. There. So the what they did is they changed it to where it's down three point five percent. So the maximum that a city can raise taxes is three point five percent a year. And if it goes above that, the voters have the right to file a petition and have a rollback election to set that aside and that increase aside. And of course, in the current tax climate, we know how the majority of voters would generally vote if they're being asked whether or not to increase taxes. One thing you need to remember is that these taxes that we're talking about are for maintenance and operation. They're not for debt service. So if the if the city issued a bond issue for paving streets or for for improving the water and sewer infrastructure, the taxes to pay for that don't count. But the general taxes that go into the general fund is what we're talking about. So the next slide is. So the what we're what we're left with is y'all go into the budget year and y'all start thinking about the budget is that you can't increase property taxes more than three and a half percent. It probably doesn't apply to Alpine, but they also let small cities raise taxes up to five hundred thousand dollars a year. But that generally applies to cities even smaller than Alpine. So what you're left with is that final slide is that the best way to deal with the new laws and the new tax climate is to try to start thinking about budgets on a longer term horizon than just one year at a time. And if you see that we need to have taxes up more than three and a half percent for major projects that we might want to have three or four years down the line, the way to get there is to do it incrementally and raise taxes in small bites every year. If the city needed, if y'all decided you wanted to have a plan that might require raising taxes eight percent to pay for a new sewer plant, for instance, not a new sewer plant, but a but some new downtown redevelopment or something like that. You would you couldn't do it all at once with eight percent, so you'd need to think ahead and do it incrementally little by little. And that way you could get there when you have the project in mind. And also, as a practical matter and political matter, the smaller increases are less likely to raise the ire of the voters. So that Senate Bill two, I also sent y'all a fifteen page Texas Municipal League question and answer for if y'all have more specific questions about it, more details, and I'm also happy to answer them. But the but that's this is what you can think about as you deal with the the budget year as you go through the summer, trying to come up with a new budget for the city of Alpine. Do I have any questions?
Hey, Rod, let me let me just add one other note in there. Some of the the item that you'll find in that fifteen page document that Rod provided out of T M L is there is going to be a little bit of change on public hearings based on what what we determine as we go through the budget process this year. So Megan and I are queued in on that to make sure we do the proper proper postings and whatnot. So there's some minor changes there as well. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Rod, for putting that together. I had been called into a meeting three or four weeks ago with some other city managers and just wanted to make sure we were all grounded on that as we're walking into the budget session, the budget season.
Eric, this is Rick, and this is probably from Megan as well. When we look at Alpine, you know, my calculation says the half a million dollars is not a big driver for us because it's it's about the tax increasing the percentage, and as property values go up or down, you know, that that's a separate issue from a change in the tax rate.
Correct. We're really just talking about total tax revenues on the M and O side here.
Yep.
But but you're right. If if the the appraisal values go up, and we've seen this in years past, if there's a huge jump in valuation, then we actually, the tax rate goes down a little bit, but the revenue still go up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rod.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got Dr. Escobar queued up first. Once Megan does the screen share and takes Dr. Escobar off mute, I will let act to take it away for us.
Two seconds to find her on the list. I'm down to one screen. I'm not using two screens. There you go. Dr. Escobar, you're on.
Okay, perfect. So we can go to the third slide there. Perfect. So this is an update on our case count. So with our case count, there's not much difference than two weeks ago. We've kind of stagnated in a lot of our areas around us. The one area of note specifically is Pecos County, Fort Stockton, and they have a they have a jail up there. They've had an outbreak in the jail, and they've had a bump in cases. They've doubled their case count in the last two weeks because of that outbreak. So Fort Stockton is our closest high risk area that we really should try to avoid as much as possible. That's our current closest neighbor that has that has an outbreak. Del Rio, you can see down in Valverde County is actually down to zero active cases. They had thirteen over the last six weeks or so, and they've slowly recovered, really not had a lot of new cases, and they're down to, just like us, no active cases being monitored. So that's been really great news. And in terms of our urban areas, El Paso continues to actually have really, really high rates of cases. If you saw Governor Abbott's press conference on Monday, he actually allowed quite a lot of counties in Texas to move forward with reopening, with the exception of a couple counties, and El Paso was one of them. El Paso still has not gotten their numbers under control or even plateaued. That's been that's been a really big concern because they're are one of our closest big cities. So something to keep in mind, Midland and Odessa have stagnated. They're not yet, but they're definitely they're definitely plateaued, which is reassuring. And San Angelo has actually started a slight decrease, which is really reassuring. El Paso is our closest urban area that we need to keep an eye on, as well as Fort Stockton is one of our more rural neighbors. You can go down to, yep, the next slide. Okay, so these are our trends. I actually pulled up Texas as the 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 top row of graphs, and then El Paso County specifically is our bottom. I know that's an area that we're keeping a close eye on. So let's look at Texas first. You can see that the teal line in our top left hand corner of the graph, that teal line continues to increase. It's hard to not pick up on that trend. It looked like it was stagnating and actually had a slight decrease towards the end of April. And then as we reopen, you can see that we've increased the number of cases again. Now, an argument could be made that we're having more cases because we're testing more. However, if you also look at the middle graph right next to that, look at our death rate, that also continues to climb. And so it is it is cases. You're right, we are testing more. Therefore, finding more, but our hospitalization rate has continued to increase, and the number of deaths of Texans across the state has continued to in increase. So it is it is still. This is not a reassuring graph for our state at this point. And if you look at the far right, top right corner graph, looking at our active cases, again, those are orange, and our recovered cases are blue. You can see it's a little bit choppy, but you can see that, again, we haven't seen a continued decreasing trend at any point. And it's a little choppy. You can see that there's kind of places where that number of recovered folks bumps suddenly on the bottom the orange recovered cases drop suddenly. It's because a lot of the larger counties, so even El Paso County, Harris County for Houston, Dallas, Tarrant County for Fort Worth, what they're doing is they're reporting their active and recovered numbers once a week only. Usually, it's at the beginning of the week. They have too many cases to give updated, really good, solid updated numbers daily. So they've been reporting it weekly. So you can see that some of the smaller counties are reporting every day, hence the slight increase. And then, you know, the bigger county suddenly jump in on a Sunday or Monday, and then our cases suddenly change. So it's a little bit choppy, and you can see the graph right below it with El Paso. You can see El Paso is doing the same way. It's a little bit choppy, and then it comes back up. Yep, exactly. And it comes back up. So that's why it's that way. It's just been really hard for El Paso to report accurately every day. But overall, you can see that the number of active cases, they're not declining on a steady level. If anything, they they kind of correct, and then they go right back to the total they were the week before, and then they correct and go right back to the total. So we're really not seeing a declining number of active cases, and that's really what we're looking for. And looking at the other two graphs for El Paso, again, the teal line, you can see that we're increasing the number of cases. And again, not just increasing the number of COVID cases in El Paso County, but also look at our deaths. So we still have folks dying, increasing numbers every day of folks dying from COVID. And so that is really concerning, and El Paso continues to be a place that we should really take precautions for avoiding and and letting them take care of what they need to do within their population and not adding to those numbers. We'll go to the last slide. And these these are our case counts as of earlier this week. So our cases, I kind of bolded the columns that are really important to look at. It helps figure out what we need to look at. So the cases out of a thousand, we're currently still only have our one case in Brewster County that, again, is recovered. So no active cases. It brings our case count to point zero five cases per one thousand people. You can see Texas is at one point seven cases per thousand, and the U S is at four point six seven. And looking at testing, the U S is testing at about thirty six people per every thousand. Texas is twenty four, almost twenty five people per every thousand. We are currently the tenth worst state for testing numbers, which is better than where we were two weeks ago when I last presented. And so we've been slowly improving our testing numbers, but we are still tenth lowest. And then again, the tri-county with we've had some mobile testing units that came through this past week. Presidio was on May, I'm sorry, Fort Davis was on Sunday, May tenth, Presidio was and then Marfa was Thursday, May fourteenth. So including those numbers, we currently have three hundred ninety eight tests that are out and done. And that makes our test rate about twenty one tests per one thousand people. All of those tests, they're starting to trickle in test results. I've heard some folks getting their test results and, you know, and that they're negative. If there's a positive one, then obviously we'll hear from the county judges in those respective counties. So no positives yet, but I think the results are starting to come in, but none of those results have been completed.
So acta Rick Stevens here. So of the three hundred ninety eight, how many test results have come back in? Are you aware of that number?
We are. So we only have less than twenty test results back. So let me back up. We had seventy one people test in Fort Davis. We had seventeen people test in Presidio and another seventy test in Marfa. And so we have a little over a hundred and fifty people that tested in this past week, and we only have about twenty of those test results that have resulted. And so, yeah, it's a very small minority. So we still have a lot of results that are out there impending.
Yeah. What seems to be the turnaround time? Is it still kind of like the ten day, ten business days?
Yeah, it is. The the labs are really trying to make sure that those that are severely ill and are hospitalized are getting priority with their testing. So turnaround testing for more critically ill folks are about two to three days. So because they want to maintain that and not bobble neck everybody, they're batching these milder cases that are getting done at the mobile sites. And so we're testing about twenty, you know, they're doing batches of twenty to twenty five a day. I don't know how they're organizing it if it's across a site versus a county or whatever. But that's what that's the numbers that they're giving me is they're trying to do a small sum every day so that the hospitalized folks can still get their tests a lot faster because they're critically ill.
Yep, yep, that makes sense.
Hey, hey, acta, I get a couple calls in usually every day or two about tabulation on the tests. How many have resulted? Is there a way that we could maybe make it a little bit more public? You know, where we say, you know, out of this this hundred and fifty eight tests that we just did, we've got twenty results in. And then, you know, the next day, we we report that, hey, now we have forty results in. Is there a way we could do that? Maybe put it out on our main certain like work with G O and have it on our city website?
Yeah, I know Judge Gano was looking at doing something like that on the Brewster County website, but I also think that the Alpine, city of Alpine website gets a lot more traffic. And so I know Fort Stockton and a lot of other towns have been publicly posting all that data, and I don't have a problem with that at all. We can always update that week to week or something like that. The downside with those mobile testing units is that I get more of a total headcount towards the end as they're kind of starting to finish up all of the test results. So I don't get necessarily a day to day update. The only thing I get is just folks around town saying, I got my negative test result today or something like that. So I don't get any definitive data until we kind of start wrapping testing up, which is usually about two weeks out. So and I don't want to bombard the health department if all we're getting is negative testing anyway. Test results back, they have, you know, more important things to do than give us the number of negative test results. So I'm trying to balance how much we bother them until we get something pretty significant. Um, but we can definitely do that if we want to and maybe do a weekly update or something like that, just so we can balance the information we need with with making sure everybody gets updated.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's there's a general level of curiosity with several several other residents.
Counselor Stevens?
Sure.
I had a private COVID test done last Wednesday at the Martha Country Clinic and received my negative results on Sunday.
Okay, quick.
So I'm coronavirus free.
That's good.
We'll still continue to zoom.
Yes.
We'll quarantine you, Rod.
Yep.
Certified claim.
Yep, doctor. In in Fort Stockton, if confined to the prison, are these the the guards that are there, yep, we might have some from Alpine that work at the prison. Are they being tested on a regular basis?
Fort Stockton currently has over a hundred tests that are pending. They have been increasing the testing at the jail to ensure that everybody working there, as well as the inmates there, also have have tests done so we can figure out who needs to be isolated and who doesn't. So I know that includes a lot of Alpine folks, but again, as the local health authority, I only get notified of positive results. And so it's hard to know how many tests are out there pending. The mobile testing units are giving me a really easy way to add those tests to our total for our tri-county area. But, yeah, it's been really hard to know. It's been really hard to know for for more specific information.
Okay, and we're still having issues with getting more testing because lack of test kits? Or is that still true?
It is. It's getting a little bit better. Our testing supply chain has picked up slightly, and as Texas itself is improving their testing capability, that has really helped. And so we are working on it, and more and more tests, different variety of tests are getting approved through the F D A. And so it's going to be really interesting to see how we can improve our testing capability on the clinic and hospital levels in different areas around our around the tri-county area as well. But it is looking, it's less tight than it was even a month ago, for sure. So we don't have enough test, we don't have enough test to open it up to everybody just yet, but we are getting better at it.
Okay, because I was getting kind of concerned because now since Texas opened up, what, two weeks ago, Friday, from Friday to Sunday, we had like thirteen hundred cases in the two day timeframe.
Right. Yeah, and the issue with test, those swabs, because again, we can't run the test here, so we swab them and send the test, the swab off to be tested. Um, with an air with a county that has currently zero active cases, we're the low man on the totem pole for where they're going to send the supplies. And so it's a catch twenty two. We can't find more cases until we swab more, and they're not going to send us swabs because we have very few cases. And so, you know, part of part of what we have to do is, again, do, you know, the things that we can be individually responsible for, you know, hand washing and, you know, social distancing and stuff to make sure that we can do our part. But we are working really hard to try to increase our testing, our swabs and our supply chain. But it is looking a little bit better, like I said, than a month ago.
Counsel, I just want you to be aware that Ramona Levis has joined the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for acta?
No, that I think that's it. Those were my only questions that I had was about the testing and the increase that we had over the weekend. But hopefully, you know, everybody will start, continue to practice, you know, social distancing and wearing your mask. And that seems to have really helped a lot in our area, even though we're sparsely populated and isolated. That doesn't make a difference because we still have a lot of folks coming through. But I think the folks overall, Alpine City Council also, and doing our part, I think that's helped tremendously in keeping the virus out of our area.
Yes, agree.
And I don't mind, Eric, if you want to let me know where to send the our testing numbers and all of that for our area. I can definitely get that to you guys so we can put it on the Alpine City website.
Yeah, certainly email it to me and G O. Or he's the records clerk. When you email it to me the first time, I'll hit a reply all and copy G O on it, so you'll have his email address as well.
Perfect. We'll do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Hey, Megan, can you jump down to the next slide for us now?
I sure can.
Topic that we get a few calls in on, questions, city swimming pool, right? So what does COVID mean to swimming in Alpine? As well as other places in the state. Something act and I had spoke about, really five key items to keep in mind. You know, water in the pool itself is not really the main risk. You know, there's there's operation maintenance, disinfection with chemicals of the pool. But COVID really is spread through droplets and putting multiple people together in a moist wet environment makes it very easy to to pass that virus or any other infectious disease. Pools, you know, also a place where we see a lot of splashing, spluttering, you know, inhaled water, coughing. We've all played and jumped around in pools over the years and know what happens there. And a lot of face to face playing and jovial nature of being in a pool. So certainly practicing social distancing is tougher when you're in a pool. You know, it doesn't always allow that to happen as as we would playing in a park or walking on a path. And, you know, there's lots of things outside of the pool, the rails, the benches and things like that that get touched multiple times. And the 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 ability to wipe those down between every contact is is almost impossible. And then we also have to consider, you know, showers, changing rooms, bathrooms. You know, some folks will say, You know, some folks will say, hey, close your, close your bathroom and you'll be fine. The reality of it is it's very tough to close a bathroom in a pool because we know when people jump into cold water, it constricts the bladder. And, you know, somebody's not going to necessarily get out of the pool to get in the car and drive home to use the potty. So these are all some of the things that we have to consider when we look at swimming pool. You know, the next slide, Megan. The other piece that we did from a staff perspective is reach out to the insurance risk pool who carries our insurance and ask them if, if someone in the city were to contract COVID-19 and they, they believed it came from the swimming pool, would we be at risk? Normally, in a, in a park setting, if somebody gets injured at a park, you know, say they stepped in a gopher hole or they fell off of a piece of equipment. City's not going to be liable for that law in the state of Texas that protects us. But one of the pieces of that law is if there's a known hazard, we have to guard against that known hazard. So I liken it to, you know, if we had a piece of equipment that broke and there was a steel rod hanging out of it, we've got to secure and protect the public from that as quickly as possible. So COVID, you know, kind of raises this question. We know it's pandemic. We know it's a virus. We know how it changes. So, you know, do we have risk? And TML came back and said, yeah, posit, positively do have risk. Their general recommendation to us yesterday was to not open the pool this year. With that being said, part of opening a pool too is lifeguard requirements. We do have three folks that were certified under two-year certifications. That last year was their first year. This year would be their second year. They're actually multiple year type people that have, that have worked for us in the past. So we do have three people. Calvin Pierce, like Billings and Eliana Luhon. Both of, all three of them are still interested in working for us. So that's something that's, that's a good thing. We definitely have them available. And, you know, one of the other things I wanted to kind of touch on today too, relative to our lifeguards is you know, these folks are young adults, right? So, you know, if you put somebody like myself, we put a Chris Ruggia, we put a Marcy Tuck. You know, we're people that have been around the block a few times and pushing cleaning standards in a, in a pool environment. It's a little easier for somebody who's been out working for 20, 25 years than a young adult. And I have, you know, a lot of respect for these, you know, young people. I know all, all of them. But it's also a heavier burden. So that's something else that from a city perspective, we've contemplated. So then it pivoted into this conversation about, well, if we, you know, if we're not able to open the pool, right, what else can we really do? And some of the stuff that I had picked up at previous coffee, city manager was, you know, what are we doing as far as rec programs across Alpine? Do we have some opportunity to provide rec programs? And something that, that Dr. Escobar and I talked about is, you know, I asked her, I said, hey, Ektah, if we do some alternate programs, what does that look like? And she says, you know, as long as you maintain the social distancing and, you know, are thoughtful in the activities you pick, then that seems to be a great segue to still provide activities, not only for our youth, but for our adults across the, the summer months. And so as, you know, I've already hired Calvin Pierce, had a discussion with him yesterday about, you know, pool doesn't open, what other activities would we do? So he's mapped out a list of seven or eight activities. And like I said, I've got three people that worked for us last year. They're still certified. We're going to hire them. I have a fourth, fourth individual, Casey Gallego. Wanted to have two, two males and two females on staff and we're going to, we're going to charge forward in the summer with other activities. You know, as, as Dr. Escobar and I talk through the course of the summer, if something changes and and all of a sudden we determine that it would be safe to open the pool or we have some real strict standards that, that would allow us to do that. Then, then we could, we could pivot and make that transition. So I think that's something that I'll bring back to council the second meeting of every month. We'll talk about it and make a determination from there. But as always, we're not going to sit on our thumbs and do nothing. There's great things you can do in Alpine, everything from frisbee golf to yoga to fitness to ice cream social and things like that, that, that really promote and provide social distancing in a, in a very safe, safe manner. So also to note, K. Whitley, Calvin reached out to K. K. is not certifying anybody right now. So that's going to limit things in, in the region. Obviously, because, you know, if a place needs, needs lifeguards, there's no real certification going on right now. So. Makes sense to everybody?
Yeah. City manager, we're talking about parks and recreational activities. How about the public restrooms at the parks? Are we safeguarding those things?
Yeah, right now we're not, you know, opening those for general use. We really have limited bathrooms. So that's, that's another thing that, you know, we certainly can clean, right? You can clean and put hand sanitizer in there. And that's something that Robert Yanis and I have to discuss a little bit further. I do understand that having public restrooms is nice when you're out. And as long as we have good signage and good cleaning, those that are in emergency situation might want to use those.
Okay. Okay. That was a question posed to me by one of the residents. So I can get back with them with that then.
Yeah.
Eric, this is Rick. Are we going to hire the three lifeguards and put them to work on other city programs?
We are, we are. We're going to, we're going to hire all, the three of them plus Casey Gallego. She'll be the fourth. Have two, two men, two women. You know, Blake Billings, he's, he's the son of Adrian Billings. Of course Calvin Pierce, son of John Pierce. Eliana, Casey, really good young ladies in the community. And we've got a list of activities to kick off with and you know, I, I don't see us opening the pool this summer. It just doesn't. You know, all the health standards and protocol, everything I've, I've mowed over with, with Ektah and also with the insurance risk pool. It doesn't look like there's ever going to be a thumbs up this season. But we, we definitely want to offer good programs that are mindful of, of health and safety and social distancing. So we're going to do just that.
Well, and it's interesting, you know, so far the state order says you can open up to 25%. What is 25% of capacity for the Alpine pools? You know, offhand?
About 35, 40 people.
Okay. So if you did 35, 40 people, then you got to manage how long people stick in, stick around or allowed to be in and all the other issues associated with that. And then the other information I know you sent out this morning, looking at what's going on at summer school. I noted with interest that social distancing for summer school, which can effectively start the first of June, says everyone has to be six feet apart. You can't get 10 students in a classroom, six feet apart in any classrooms in Alpine. So then the next would be you can only do it in the gym or the cafeteria. And at most you can have three groups of 11, which you know, my sense is swimming pools are kid magnets. You cannot keep kids away from each other in the doggone swimming pool. So the reality of social distancing is doggone near impossible.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. And it, it would put a lot of burden on our lifeguards because they would constantly be blowing the whistles. They'd, they'd have to call me and we'd have to call Chief Martin and we'd have to be going over there because it, it just is tough. I mean, I was a 15, 16 year old kid playing in the pool. I remember it's, it's, you, you get carried away.
Yep. Half the fun of a pool is dunking your friends.
Right, exactly. Which is not social distancing.
Okay.
But yeah, we've got, we've got four young adults that are raring and ready to go and put programs together for the benefit of not just youth, but adults here in Alpine.
And the last question I have, Eric, are there other pools in the area that are opening up that we're aware of? And if so, what do we know about that?
Yeah. So we do know Pecos County, which is interesting because as Dr. Escobar talked about, you know, they're, they're having increases in, in case counts in Pecos County. But their county pools, they've given a thumbs up to open. Oh, think of Ira Anne, think of Fort Stockton, those communities within Pecos County. I, I did hear anecdotally, I didn't look at their website, but Odessa was not going to open their pools this summer. So I you know, I think a lot of people are just going to look for alternate activities. Maybe, you know, when the, when the national park opens up, they'll head down to, to the river and cool off in the river. I think we'll see people going over to Lake Anistop a little bit more. Probably doing more lake type activities where you can spread out a lot and, and, and cool off that way this summer.
Yeah.
Counselor Stevens, just real quick, Councilman Beau Johnston from, or Buck Johnston from Marfa reached out to us last week to see if we were going to open the city pool. And I believe she also reached out to Dr. Escobar to get recommendations. And she was actually going to push for the Marfa pool to stay closed.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, thanks very much. It's a really tough decision because I've gotten a number of calls from residents in Ward 5 that says, boy, I sure hope you open the, the pool. My response has been to go back with what Dr. Escobar has provided in terms of information and insight. You know, it's a risk issue. Certainly everyone loves the doggone proving open, but the last thing we need is to create a hotspot there, which is too bad.
Yeah. And I think the way we've positioned with our staff, if if we felt middle of summer that you could pivot and, and do something different, then we're in as best position as possible.
Yep. Okay. Thanks for me.
Thank you. Next slide, Megan. Yeah. Which, which then leads us into other large activities. Fourth of July, Kiwanis Fiesta del Barrio, right? You know, something that Dr. Escobar and I talked about as well, these ideas and recommendations to strongly consider. Rhonda Cole, who spearheads the Kiwanis Fourth of July Celebration had reached out and these ideas were shared with Rhonda, but they, they also applied to Fiesta del Barrio as well. For those who don't know this, this is Kiwanis 50 year celebration of Fourth of July. So certainly something that they were queuing up is wanting to have a big year. But, you know, when you look at things that you have to consider, you know, less booze, spreading them out, that, that's easily doable. Having more social distancing in the line, I think, I think people have been training more and spreading out. So that becomes more easy to accomplish, especially in, in a large venue setting. You know, no throwing out of things during a parade, right? So the high school is going to be doing a graduation parade and that was something that you mentioned, I talked about is, you know, you just drive down the street. You don't have to throw things out. You can, you know, honk a horn, play music. But you don't want to throw things. You know, at a park relative to, you know, Fourth of July, you know, marking areas off for people to be spread out. And then certainly having lots of hand sanitizer stations throughout the park and certainly pushing in the encouragement of using masks. My sense is some folks who prefer to wear a mask may, may avoid going to a large, larger group setting. And we still don't have specific from DSHS yet, specific guidelines. We anticipate there'll be push on the governor and, and the Department of Health, Health Services to have something out because we're not the only city asking about this. As we see those come out, we'll, we'll publish and share with council. Fair enough? All right.
Okay.
Next slide, Megan. Causing into a little different topic here, economic development. Really thought it was important. You know, a fundamental thing that we've been trying to do from the city relative to infrastructure and rebuilding infrastructure, specifically the streets has been to help invite, you know, business growth and prosperity within Alpine. Certainly COVID-19 has provided a, a level of redirection. But wanted to take a look back at the vision plan and really look at that economic development section. You know, the five key points that were called out there, you know, the branding around tourism, historical district. Also, you know, somewhat of an activity center between, you know, Art Walk, Viva Big Bend, events like that are, are super important to the success of Alpine. There, there were also ideas about tax increment finance or TIF district, type A and B Economic Development Corporation. Those types of taxing authorities. I've generally always been a little bit more cautious on trying to create another taxing entity. Because that chews up a lot of money, creating those types of taxing entities. If there's good output that's going to drive real dollars of investment in businesses and infrastructure, then we're certainly going to go after those. But, you know, most importantly, you know, what we can do and what we are doing is expanding that local infrastructure. And working back on business support, you know, even through the COVID crisis, you know, helping redirect with some of Chris's time, some of Marcy's time and, and connecting people with our small business development. And, you know, SBA loans here in Alpine, which are certainly going to continue to be an important factor moving forward. You know, we're also seeing a few more regional seminars pop up, identifying where grant dollars are available. Many of them require a match, so we just have to wade through those. But I think most importantly, what I wanted to communicate with, with council today is we are starting to build a plan where we really look at how do we recruit knowledge-based workers? And how do we provide that sort of venue for, I call it the trailing spouse syndrome, you know, if we university recruits someone to be a professor or a dean or a department head at the university and their spouse comes out with them and gave up a job that they were at for seven or 10 years, what do they do here in Alpine? Well, sometimes there's a job available, but sometimes maybe they want to consider doing something online. And what we're really learning through COVID is that many organizations have taken their staff members. They've deployed them to work from home. And we're seeing article after article after article where large organizations are saying, hey, our employees don't have to come back into work. We can save the commercial real estate dollars. And in fact, they can live anywhere they want in the world. So that then starts opening up opportunities for our residents here to really dive into how do I go after some of these potential jobs that are online? So we've got a little session, Marcy, Heather, Chris and I are going to go through this Friday and really start mapping out what I've identified here is kind of phase one, phase two and phase three. You know, the identification, the job potential, and then those skill requirements. And then how do we work through enabling local resources, whether it's a public library, whether it's university, whether it's the SBDC to help facilitate skill development? There's a lot of good jobs out there, 15, 20, 30, $40 an hour that people can grab a hold of that are online. And we certainly want to help provide a gateway for folks to get there too. And the, the nice thing about it is, you know, one of the things we talk about is are you recycling the same dollar bills in Alpine or are you bringing in outside dollars? So if somebody's working for an organization that is centered outside of Alpine and they're earning money from that organization and they're pulling in dollars outside of Alpine into Alpine and spending some of that here, which is super important to bringing new cash and new capital into the community. So this is, this is going to be something that we're going to kick off now. Another piece, and I don't necessarily have a bullet point on it, but David Hall and I were discussing earlier today. How do we migrate into doing a little better job at recruiting businesses, right? So it's something that we really haven't aggressively gone after. Sometimes you have an economic development corporation, you have a chamber that has a recruiter that's out there calling businesses and saying, you know, here's property. Here's resource, here's, here's an opportunity to bring your business here to Alpine, whether whether it's a three-person shop or a thirty-person shop. And so David and I started pulling together some ideas on how we we start implementing that as well. So you know, coming you know, out of a situation where we've dealt with, you know, where we've been dealing with a pandemic, we've been dealing with stressed economic resources. Part of what we want to make sure we're doing as a city is providing some freshness for the future so that we look at ways that we can help people grab jobs that maybe have more continuity, that the less risk of getting laid off and and build a better income. So questions on that?
Yeah, I got one. It's not really a question, just kind of a a statement. You know, and I'm glad you're doing that, working on this aspect of it, you know, more people working from home. But we also need to develop a better fiber network around the area. Okay, because, you know, with with these people being based at home, they want faster communication. And I think, you know, getting together with, say, with Big Ben Telephone Company. What is, what are their plans, you know, for the future of Alpine as far as, you know, going to the to more fiber optic than cop versus copper?
Yeah, part of what we did in 2015, when we rolled into the plan from a city perspective, when we rolled off of AT&amp;T onto Big Ben Telephone was to push fiber into seven city locations. So we did that in 2015, and then the the county actually piggybacked off of our, well, they didn't necessarily piggyback, they they copied our RFP and put their name on it and their locations and and built fiber into their locations in the city as well. So I know Big Ben Telephone is offering a fiber-to-the-home solution in some parts of town where they're in close proximity. But you're right. I mean, it's it's the push for higher speed bandwidth. TDS is, you know, some parts of town where their infrastructure is is newer, they perform better. Parts of town where their infrastructure is old. If, you know, if Big Ben Telephone isn't there, then then it's a little bit more marginal. We do have two fixed base wireless providers. Both Mountain Zone as well as Big Ben Telephone provide fixed base. And then certainly, you know, we've got a couple satellite providers out there that are pushing more satellites up in into the air. So these are all good, good solutions that continue to emerge.
Absolutely, you know, and, you know, in talking with the fiber, about the fiber, we need more collapsible rings in the city. I know we've got fiber going to the APD office, but it's only a one-way that gets cut, they're out of service. So, you know, that's where I think Big Ben needs to come in or AT&amp;T, whichever one, and start doing more collapsible rings. So these folks are not out of service if one side of it get cut off.
Yeah, and I think our our biggest hope on further fiber pushout is really with Big Ben Telephone. I mean, I look at AT&amp;T. Now, I worked at CenturyLink for 20 years. I mean, we just didn't put fiber in small towns anymore.
Yeah, and AT&amp;T is doing the same.
AT&amp;T is no different, Verizon's no different. I hate it, but Big Ben Telephone is really our our best option, or Mountain Zone. I mean, I don't know what Mountain Zone's play is going to be over the next five to 10 years, but they certainly are a local provider that could pivot into that.
And Big Ben is also putting a leg going to El Paso. So we'll have pretty much a collapsible ring also with them. Or, you know, last year, we fought tooth and nail with AT&amp;T. I don't know how many meetings I attended with their personnel, but, you know, the outages here. I mean, they were horrible, horrible. I mean, 26 hours for a cut driver. That's unrealistic. So, you know, I'm pushing for more for Big Ben, you know, to provide us that service that we're lacking in these smaller cities.
Yeah, and I think, talking to Rusty Moore recently, they are continuing to work to to try to expand their portfolio with with local governance as well as local school districts. But I still, I would never count out the new family at Mountain Zone. They they also have a good customer service model and a good response model, too. So I think we're fortunate, we're really blessed to have two providers headquartered here in Alpine.
Right, and Mountain Zone is what, with satellite?
No, they're a they're a fixed wireless provider.
Fixed wireless, okay.
Yeah, so so just, so Mayor, I get ninety down, seventy up. So that just gives a perspective on speed. There's plenty of speed, that's not the issue in Alpine. And also, the speed is not a problem for someone bringing a business in.
Right, but it's it's provided that speed to different locales.
Well, no, I'm wireless, I'm wireless. So mine gets beamed off a mountain.
Okay.
But it's all, you can pick it up. I I get it at the airport, I get it at home, I get it anywhere I need it. It's a, it's wireless, so it's not fiber-driven. And and at those speeds, it's not too bad for for being wireless.
Right. No, and I agree with you, and you know, and they won't get cut unless, you know, the weather plays a hand in it, but that's not very, very likely. But no, we we need more of more things like that to attract, you know, the business community to come to Alpine.
I have Mountain Zone. And I'm very pleased with it.
All right. Any any other questions?
Can you hear me, Eric?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry about coming on late, but I've been having all sorts of problems with my computer system. The, I'm really enthused about this economic development initiative or team that you're pulling together. I think it could certainly help advance Alpine in the areas of jobs and skills development. And of course, also new businesses. And I I look forward to hearing more about, once the individuals are selected, I guess, to serve on this group, about their scope, their objectives, or their structure, and what areas that they plan to focus on. But overall, I am very enthused about this. And thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, anything else or next slide? All right, thanks, Megan. Budget timeline, just want to give everybody a brief update on where we're where we're heading with our budget for this year. Five-year capital plan certainly is due to council on or before July 1, 2020. I'm anticipating having that one to two weeks in advance of of July 1st. We're getting inputs from department heads right now through the course of this month. And then I'll be reviewing with with Megan, as well as she'll be reviewing with the department heads in early June. That's what we'll we'll turn into finished product to go to council in the in the latter half of June. Then, as tradition, we'll send out a budget survey first week of June with a due date of July 5th. Want to give you some time to have both the five-year capital plan before you finish your surveys. And then would would like to host workshops, really at the the two regular scheduled meetings in July, the 7th and 21st. You know, if we schedule it, say, an hour and an hour and a half in advance, start at four instead of 5:30, then we'll give opportunity for open forum and open discussion. So that's tentatively what we're looking at on the budget surveys. Operational budget inputs will come from staff in June 2020. That'll allow us to be able to have a draft budget for council for that second workshop if we if we're able to have that on July 21st. Budget approvals will be in August. Certified tax rule is due to us by state law by July 25th. So we'll probably have a special meeting in August. If if we get everything pulled together according to this timeline. You know, a lot of so this is the mechanics of it. A lot of the background right now is just we're studying our revenues as they come in. We're really trying to pinch down on expenses to the best of our abilities so that we're very clear in how we direct dollars in this next budget cycle to make sure we have the strongest improvement on our economic situation and our infrastructure in the community. We will, you know, look at our revenues across each fund and ensure that we're associating appropriate revenue with what our necessary capital expenditures or priorities and our operation needs are. We'll be mapping that out. No real action on your part this evening, just wanted to to give you an awareness of of what we're moving towards.
So Eric, so the one I did hear is you're talking about a meeting that starts at 4:00 PM on the 7th and one at the 21st. I presume you'd like to use this as an opportunity to get feedback from council that says we're on board so we can plan our schedules accordingly, too.
Yes, sir.
Good.
So if if, and and you don't have to necessarily say anything this evening, but we'll start working the phones and calling you all directly to make sure that works. And if so, we'll get that that scheduled out, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome. Marcy?
Give me two seconds. I saw you, Marcy, hold on.
Okay.
Is that the the Marcy self-portrait picking dollars off?
That's me, right there.
I need that tree.
I have that money tree in my backyard.
All right. Share it, please.
I need one.
Ha, ha, ha. Okay, so can everybody hear me now that I'm unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. And yes, I brought back the money tree graphic. I just like it. It's fun. So, okay, next slide, Megan, please. Okay, the bulk of our discussion today for grants is going to be, you know, local funding, what we already have in the budget year, the fiscal year 20 budget year, and then what's coming up for council consideration. But before I get into that, I wanted to update you all on what we as a city are looking into and doing for FEMA reimbursements to help reimburse and cover some of the costs that the city has incurred throughout this COVID nineteen pandemic. So the first item that you all have is the FEMA Public Assistance Grant. And I can tell you, this FEMA stuff, this CARES Act funding is all over the board. It changes frequently, and we just have to keep up, honestly. This has flip-flopped from being the best place for Alpine to apply was at the federal level, and then it was state level, and then it was federal level again. And actually, since I submitted my slides, I think it might be back to the state level through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. So as staff, we are following all of these options, trying to make sure that we go the most efficient and, you know, expeditious route for us to receive some funding for those costs that we have already incurred as a city as part of this. It says Public Assistance Grant, but truthfully, through the Texas Department of Emergency Management, we're looking at getting a pretty quick and easy, hopefully around $65,000 is 20% of the of the allotment that they said that we could have. There's a list that shows what communities are eligible for what amount of allotment, assuming that you've actually incurred those costs. But we are going down that track, which supposedly is a fast-tracked method of getting some funds to help us recover what we've spent. So while we're pursuing something that's not even on the list at this point, just know that staff is looking at it and tracking it, and we're doing the best that we can to get what we can as soon as we can. The next line item is through the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, which is also part of the CARES Act. And this is coming through Tech dot aviation, and this is what they're calling Assistance for Airport Grants. And again, they have a list of, you know, municipal or general aviation municipal airports throughout the state. And they have allocations for each of those airports. They're assuming correctly that most all airports have lost revenue because there was a travel, you know, travel discouragement. I don't know if I'll say ban, but and so Alpine has been allotted $20,000 for general operations and maintenance, and there's no match required. So I and Megan are working with Tech dot staff. Solidified their process yet, but they're actively working on it. And we'll do what we need to do, and we will sign whatever forms we need to sign. In fact, there might be some resolutions one or two on the next council meeting relating to these, just saying, yes, we want to enter into these programs to receive these funds. So those are the two that are very active. The next two items, I believe, relate to actually what the mayor was just speaking about about broadband connections. Part of the CARES Act, there is also the USDA's Reconnect Program, but it is more of a, it is a loan program. However, the Economic Development Administration, their Economic Adjustment Assistance Program has the potential to potentially give funds towards beefing up broadband and fiber optics out in our area. That that governance is still not tight, honestly. I'm going to reach out in conjunction with our Economic Development Meetings that Eric spoke about earlier. I'm going to reach out to the regional contact for the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, who is in Austin, and just ask a few more questions about that pot of money. I will ask if it relates to broadband, which I believe it does, but don't know 100%. I'll just ask some questions about that one. That's the one that has not been as well-defined as some of the others. So that's what I know about FEMA, which is constantly changing. Are there any questions on that before we move into more city-specific discussions on grants?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, great. Wonderful. Okay. And as we do that, I will refer you all to the two things that were also in your packet in addition to this presentation. I had a spreadsheet of dollars associated with all the grants that we're going to discuss right now, as well as a project description that better defined more than just kind of the one-liner that I had on the spreadsheet. So I refer you to those things in the packet as well. And as we move into the 20, the fiscal year 21 budget process, just wanted to point out things to consider for future projects. And I did go over some of these at our last meeting when I presented the full spreadsheet. I'm not presenting the full spreadsheet again. This is a much more targeted discussion today. So things to consider is what are the biggest needs, community needs and priorities? You know, Alpine does not have unlimited funds, as all of us know, and so we have to prioritize. Can the city manage whatever project X with current staffing and resources? That it might be a great project, but if if it takes more people to do it, then maybe we can't do it yet. So, and what is the project's return on investment? I know you all are well familiar with that one. That consideration and that, you know, has to go through all of our minds with each of these projects. Just wanted to point out that it is rare to be awarded all of the grants that we have ever applied for. I'm good, but I don't have 100% record, so. But know that if we aren't awarded, any allocated funds from that and matching funds could roll over to the next budget year, and we could try again. Or they could be, with your permission, used for other projects. So just keep that in mind. We're talking fiscal considerations for projects. And also remember that most all projects can be phased. Might not be the best for them to be phased, and that's also an area of consideration, but most of them can be. Okay, next slide. So what we're going to talk about today is four categories. We're going to talk about what we currently have going on in the fiscal year 20 budget. We're going to talk about the stuff that we've recently applied for, which you all know a lot about at this point. We're going to talk about the grant opportunities that the city has encumbered funds to support from fiscal year 20 and sometimes before even. And then the ones that you all will really need to be considering as you ponder the fiscal year 21 budget. And I just want, I just want everybody to pause and read these best-case scenario statements on the screen. If all of the projects in all of the categories, again, this is this is like rare. But if all of them were funded, that's $3.3 million worth of improvements for Alpine that only required $327,000 of city funds. that only required $327,000 of city funds. So that's a 9.6 match of city funds, or the other way to look at it is a 943% return on investment. That's amazing. So even if we just consider all of the upcoming projects, that is, you know, six at the end of what we'll talk about right now, that's $2 million worth of improvements for the same $327,000. So that's a 512% ROI. So we, as a city, have opportunities for if we put in a little bit of money, we can get a whole lot of return. But that's where your important decisions lie on, okay, what are we going to spend that money on? So just keep that in mind as we move forward. Megan? Okay, let's start out with our current fiscal year 20 and ongoing grants. I'm going to run through most of these categories relatively quickly until we get to the the new ones. But right now, we are receiving HIDA funds, which is high intensity drug trafficking areas, I believe, funds through the DEA office, and it funds two full-time officers and one coordinator, no match required. We also have received Ramp funds or, ooh, Megan, can you can you help me out with Ramp? I should have written it out.
Regular airport ma- routine airport.
Maintenance program funds. There we go. Right. And that's a 50/50 match. 20 is our portion, 40,000 for the full project that was identified. And then we are also in the process of working with Grant Works, Jerry Carvahal, who has managed the CDBG funds in the past for a while now. And we received funds for the Fire Hydrant Infrastructure Project. The city's match was 13,750 of a pretty big total, so that was a, that was a great return on investment. Their next upcoming deadline is in February for a different project. Okay, next slide. So recently applied for grants are the ones that you all have approved resolutions for. Excuse me, have a approved resolutions for in the past meetings and I'm sorry, let me eat a drink water. And those are all through the Office of the Governor, and they're primarily public safety grants. So one was for body armor and body cameras. And actually, Captain LaSoya presented at the the scoring committee today through the Rio Grande Council of Governments via Zoom. He did a great job. So we presented on that one. We also had local border security program application for more officers and department-wide overtime. And we have also applied for what they call regular program funds. And that was for a bunch of different communication devices, including a repeater, car radios, portable radios, et cetera. And that one was presented at the Scoring Committee of the Rio Grande Council of Governments in March. All of those, we will be notified in August of this year. We really have no idea until then, or until until they tell us. So I I listened in on Captain LaSoya's presentation today as backup, you know, hoping that they didn't have any specific questions for me, and they didn't. But they they don't give you any hints on how they're leaning. So all of the committee members are just there to score and rate all of the applicants. And of course, there's more applicants than funds. But I feel like we have a good chance with these, so hopefully. Okay, next. Encumbered funds. So encumbered funds are basically dollars that council has already earmarked for certain projects. Or yes, that have been earmarked for certain projects. And so these encumbered funds that we have, we are looking into very quickly now. This says that we've already done it, but now we've bumped that out to the end of this week instead of the end of last week, applying through the USDA for the Community Facilities Grant Program. And this is to get a much better mower than what the airport has now. The one that the airport has now is 40 years old and apparently barely working. And we have 25,000 in the budget, in the fiscal year 20 budget for large equipment for the airport. But this grant will enable us to get a much better machine and not use all of that 25,000, which could then be helpful in offsetting some of the revenue lost at the airport this year because of COVID. So that's one that we're looking and doing right now. Another one is applying for a splash pad at Coconut Park that I'm sure you all remember the discussions about. This is through the Permian Area Basin Fund, Permian Basin Area Foundation, excuse me. And City Council allocated 50,000 in capital funds to set aside or to put towards a splash pad. The project estimate is 200,000 on that with the Big Ben Parks and Recreation for Kids nonprofit raising funds and local community members stepping in and other foundations being approached as well. The Permian Basin Area Foundation has deferred all non-emergency funding until at least the fall, but they are still committed to this project. They wanted to help, you know, the region and their area with COVID emergency stuff, putting some of this other more fun stuff on the back burner until we can, until we can. So and then the last one is encumbered funds that the Energy Transfer Partners gave to the city, $187,000 towards trails. So Texas Parks and Wildlife has a trail grant. It's a smaller trail grant. But that means that our money can go, and it's an 80/20 match, which means they put up 80% of the cost and we chip in 20. So if their maximum award is 200,000, and if that's their maximum, 20% of a total project would be us contributing 50,000 per grant cycle and application. I really feel like the way that the trails could be in Alpine, it could, those could definitely be phased. The way that the master park plan was presented and created has kind of a phased approach to those types of developments. And this is a grant that the city already has the funds for, so there's really no reason why we shouldn't go after it. On all of these, honestly. So that's it for encumbered funds. Making sure I'm getting everything in. Yes, okay. And then, oh, nope.
One back.
One back. All right. So it's okay. So I know this is a lot of text, and I apologize. But this is, these are the upcoming grant opportunities. So these are the funds that if any were, if we, if council decided and Eric, you know, did staff to pursue, these would all have to have new matching funds from the fiscal year 21 budget. So sort of our top six list, if you will, for upcoming grant opportunities. Here we go. This is not in any kind of order. This is just how they ended up on the bullet points. So we have discussed in Ward Two, we went straight from trails. Now we'll go to the parks, I guess. Adding a great park to Pueblo Nuevo or creating one, there is nothing there now. So there is the local parks, non-urban outdoor recreation grant through Texas Parks and Wildlife, and it's a 50/50. And so the Pueblo Nuevo Park has been designed, as is designed, the projected cost is about 400,000. So 50/50 would be 200,000 and 200,000. That is an option, and the city would need to set aside $200,000 in funds before we apply for that grant. We can't just say, oh, yeah, we'll get it to you. You know, if you give us the grant, we've got it. It has to be dedicated amounts, all of these do. So that is one of the opportunities. And that is, that will likely, they're shifting around their deadlines at Texas Parks and Wildlife right now. It will likely be in October, although it might still be January, February. I I'm I'm watching that one. Next opportunity, downtown revitalization program. This is a different CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program. This is an amazing deal in terms of matching funds. Funds for replacement of sidewalks and curbs in the business area. Eric and Eddie and others, David and I walked the downtown area for what streets still need sidewalk improvements, et cetera. And based on all of that, going from Second Street to Eighth Street on the side streets, not on Fifth or Holland, but on the the cross streets, if you will, to redo those entrances and sidewalks and curbs would be about $225,000. And the the minimum match required for the city is 3.5%. And so I've put down $9,000 of a city match, which is actually 4% of that. Would need to be earmarked for that specific grant opportunity. And in this case, I didn't want to call it encumbered funds, but the city annually puts in money for street improvements. So I feel like money that thousand could come from the funds that the city annually dedicates towards street improvements anyway. And that application is due September 1st. So the next one is the Fire Ambulance Service Truck Grant. And that one, or fund, excuse me, the FAST Fund. And I believe in talking with Eric that Chief Martin and Eric are in the process of, and I guess Megan, of category, of cataloging all of our capital assets at the fire department. I don't know that we've 100% decided on what the best thing to apply for under this fund would be, but the city minimum match is $5,000, and it can go up to $500,000 in terms of equipment. So as, you know, as a city, we need to consider what the best opportunity for that fund would be, and this is an annual fund. But right now, the next deadline is September the 1st as well. So also, under CDBG, they have a planning, next line item is a planning and capacity building grants. And that one is, in talking with Eric, perhaps the best option for the city would be to apply for funds from, for a consultant to come in and create a strategic growth and development plan to include updated zoning. Through the USDA, we are only eligible because of our population size for $55,000 of a grant with a 15% city match required. But the good part about that is, is I really think that $65,000 project with a $10,000 city match is going to give us a really strong opportunity for a strategic growth and development plan. That application is also due by September 1st. I'm going to be really busy in August. The last two, Texas Oracle Commission, it has been discussed to renovate the historic Alpine Schoolhouse, which for those of you that don't know what that is, that's the former Sunshine House building, as the new location for the city billing and finance departments. And estimated costs for basic reno would be about $40,000. And the city could request funds from the THC for $20,000 to recapture some of those funds, and that's due January of 2021. And then perhaps the the biggest item on this list is through the Airport Improvement Program, which is also managed and mainly driven by Tech dot aviation staff. And upcoming, there is a project on the table for funds for airport lighting improvements. And that project has been estimated at almost $1,920,000. But because Tech dot is a 90/10 match, so $92,000 of city funds would be required to apply for that. And then Tech dot will pay the rest.
And that that's the one that we've already committed to the engineering, and then we'll do the the actual project. We'll probably want to get half the money set aside this next fiscal year, and then the other half the following fiscal year.
So those are the upcoming grant opportunities. Okay, Megan, now last slide. Okay, that was a whole lot of information. So are there any questions?
Are you watering that money tree?
I'm trying. I'm trying to water it up.
Put plenty of water. We're in the middle of a drought.
It's pretty, it's pretty small right now. I'm not going to lie, so.
Yeah, you're doing a great job, Marcy. We, you know, needed a grant writer for some time, and you're doing fantastic with this, and I appreciate it. The city appreciates it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So this is Rick, the only question I have is, and it's, you know, for you or Megan or Eric. I presume we'll have a discussion about all of this as part of the next fiscal year funds, so we know where the dollars are. And because I, so that's the first question. The second part of that is our, is our probability of grant award driven by how much the city puts forward? So two questions.
Eric, would you like to answer the first one, and then I'll attempt?
Yeah, I'll answer, I'll answer the first one. So yes, as we're building our five-year capital plans, more specifically, as we look at years one and two, these are, these are going to be part of that plan. So yes, definitely, yes. And then we'll, as we see the the projected revenues that we come, that we're projecting coming in this year, we'll determine with council what we can allocate towards.
And then, Rick, to your second question, it depends. I know that's, I'm really not trying to deflect question, but it depends on the agency, the funding agency and the opportunity. For example, the CDBG funds for the sidewalks, the fact that it's a minimum 3.5% match on the city's part, 9,000 would be, you know, 4%, 10,000 would be I didn't do the math on that one. And but what looks good on that project overall is that Alpine has this big, huge plan of sidewalk and street improvements that we're already going forward with. Something like the mower for the airport through the USDA that we're currently doing the paperwork for right now. I really think just doing the 50, you know, just doing our 45% match is fine, like to to the number, almost maybe we round up to the nearest five or 10.
Yeah.
Just that's all that's required. That's all we should do. For Texas Parks and, for the Trails Grant, put in our 20 because we're showing that that we're investing a lot more in that type of improvement anyway. I think it depends on the opportunity and the provider.
Okay, good.
Yes, it is helpful to provide more than the minimum, for sure.
Thanks, Marcy.
David.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you, Marcy. I'm just going to take David off mute. There we go.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protoom, City Council.
Yes, sir.
Zimmer. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. If you have any questions, please interrupt me. The last time that I was here before City Council, we talked about how dysfunctional the department was previously. I'm here and I'm happy to say that we are functional now and that our mission statement is the same as it was in January. One of the most important things about our mission statement is the second part, the department seeks to meet standards for overall quality of life and building safety through a cooperative effort with citizens of Alpine. Part of that mission statement, we've, we've implemented a new program, which is basically the Yard of the Month program. And you can get all the information on our, on the city website under Code Enforcement. And I'm happy to say we have one winner in Ward Three right now. They're unaware that they won. We haven't published it, but they do have a yard sign in their possession, and they will receive a $50 gift certificate. And they'll be entered into the $100 grand prize in September.
Super. Very good.
So being functional, we are, we are balancing. We're happy to say that we're very proactive in our budget this year and for the budget of 2020. For the most part, Um, for the most part, the department, we're trying to balance right now, uh, the available funds that we have in our operational costs. And that balance is crucial to uh, our health as a department. And how we go forward from that point. Highlights and accomplishments. Um, I guess we can go to the next slide, Megan. Yeah, thank you. So we issued, I, I'm kind of combining Q1, Q2 and Q3 to date. So we, we've actually included three new swimming pool permits in the past two days. But we've issued a total of 270 permits. Uh, if you notice that mobile home permits are probably, and moving permits, which are basically mobile home permits, are probably our highest permits right now. Uh, we've performed a total of 370 inspections. And with our new implementation of our software, which went live May 15th, uh, this software enables the department to better serve the public and also helps our department accomplish the goals that we need and the tools that we need to succeed. Um, we'll move down to the next slide. Thank you, Megan. Okay, so we had no code enforcement activity in Q1. In Q2, uh, Tony Katani, our new code enforcement officer, which I'm happy to say has written 139 code violations from April 1st through May 15th. That's amazing. That's about 2.75 a day. And I think that in uh, May, he's probably gonna succeed to probably three to four citations a day, which averages about 2.5 hours of actual desk time per citation. Uh, Mr. Katani has also received his interpersonal communication training and certification from the state of Texas. Uh, that's a T code, uh, basically certification through the marshal service. And I don't see that this trend is going to go do anything pretty much except continue on. So Q3, Q4 will, it will probably exceed 83 to probably 100, 115 citations for Q4.
David, this is Rick, certainly, and you, and you, some of the circumstances where people have contacted me, or contacted our whole council. What's your sense in terms of, you know, council, I don't think wants to get in the middle of what all is going on, but certainly there's been some ire that's bubbled up as a result of some of these citations that you and Eric get the pleasure of going off and working. Any perspective you can provide on that?
Well, I'm sure Eric's phone has been ringing. Our phone has been ringing here as well. I'm sure yours has too. All, all, all words phones have probably been ringing right now. It, it's part of, you know, our program is, is to help the citizens uh, come into compliance. Uh, we're out there on a daily basis in the field. Uh, we don't want to write citations. What we want to do is we want to make sure that they come into compliance and give them adequate time. But uh, it, it's, it's a great program. I think it's gonna work. It's, it's, it's something for the city that the city really actually needs. Uh, like I said, there was, in Q1, there was no citations written previously to 2019. I don't think that there was actually a day in court.
Nope.
So.
Okay. Yeah, one of the, one of the things I'm noticing as well, uh, when I look at them is there, there's a certain level of, of repeat. So some folks are bucking up to the system, if I can use that term. Um, and not wanting to follow uh, the ordinance as, as presented from the city. So some of these are, are repeat. It's not, it's not all individual different people.
Okay. I think a lot of it has, uh, I know that we've been writing, for the most part, illegal dumping and junk vehicles have been the two most common citations. And those, those do repeat themselves quite a bit with same offenders, so.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, phase one completed. I'm happy to say code enforcement procedures and policies are in place. And as we read down this list, uh, everything pretty much from me being here previously, it, it is complete in phase one and we are now initiating phase two. So part of phase two is keep Alpine beautiful, Yard of the Month program, uh, which we're really happy about. The second part of phase two is a cross connection control program, uh, which we will introduce new fees uh, for council to be approved for this new program. Uh, it's something that hasn't been implemented, well, it was implemented last year, but it just hasn't been enforced. And this is, this is extremely important for the safety of all the citizens in Alpine because this is about potable water and what we drink and have, and backside usage. So we're, we're getting on board with that. Phase two is continue to add new programs and new permits. And then we're gonna continue revising current zoning and land use changes. And then continuing publishing information on building services and code enforcement sites. We're gonna add a contractors portal, which is actually a citizens portal on the site so that they can get all the information they need. If we want to go to the next slide, please, Megan. Thank you. Uh, revenue by quarter with a little chart. Uh, we're gonna project that probably the Q3 revenue projection is about 17,5K. Uh, probably overall 72.5 for the year. And we're gonna move in and continue to let that grow. One of the most important things on this last part of the slide is building services department's overall objective is to grow revenue, reduce operating costs and continue to provide, provide quality services to the public through responsible fee review, building inspections and code enforcement. Um, that's our main objective. Uh, we're trying to find a balance and I think, I think by the end of the year, we'll have it. Are, are there any questions?
Thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Great job.
All right. Now we have Mr. Eddie. He's been the, but the most visible guy in the streets of Alpine.
He's all over town.
Yes. Oh, his, Megan takes him off mute. He's got some great, great images to share with you this, this, this evening on the work he's, he and his team have been doing.
Eddie, you're off mute and I did request that you start your video so that it can be recorded for the council.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Mayor, Council, um, I'm gonna go over some of the stuff that I had previously gone over with you guys in the last meeting in reference to our preparation for the streets. Oh, there you go. Uh, like I said, one of our preparations is, in this slides, you can see is we're cutting out the ripples on the streets to try to get a smoother surface. Uh, once we complete the paving, uh, this right here is on uh, West A Street, right there by the office. Of course, that's, we're cutting off the ripples and that's the end product where we already have primed that street and it's ready and patched and ready for paving. Next slide, please. Again, uh, as I said, some of the field, some of the streets actually have a, a lot of buildup on the shoulders. As you can see on the, on the first slide there, that line right there is actually the curb. Uh, that's on 11th Street, uh, in between uh, Saros all the way up to Avenue A. We actually took out on both shoulders at least uh, 25 yards of material. This wall here to your right is the end result. As you can see now, you can actually see the curb right there. Most of these streets, uh, for example, these streets, it's, it's more of the preparation that, that it, that takes longer to, to get the end result. The paving is, you know, is usually done in, within a day or two. Some of the streets like this one, for example, it took us at least uh, three days to actually get it nice and clean. And it's gonna vary. Some of the streets, you just, you know, all you gotta do is sweep, patch the the radiuses and they're good to go. Next slide, please. Again, this right here, this is uh, behind Porters on North Fort. Uh, this actually had a lot of, uh, what we call alligator cracks. The street also is already primed and as you can see, we passed the shoulders. This little slide to your right is, is the end result. You can, you can't see the, the alligator cracks in that, so that's ready to pave as well. That was by us priming the alligator cracks. Like I said previously, you know, you, you get to seal those cracks once we come in and we actually do the actual sealing, it's, it's there, you're always not gonna seep into your cracks, so it's, it's it will be a better seal. Uh, next. This, this is for, on the main alley for Jerdok work is working right now. As you can see, uh, this alley right here is right next to uh, the credit union right behind the visitor center as well. Uh, they had taken all the excess material out. Uh, they went, I think like a full deep. And as we expected, there was, there's some places, uh, I think in that alley right there, close to the credit union, they actually found a, a manhole that that not even the water department knew about it because there, it's, I mean, it's such a, no, they even found a, an old gas riser as well, over close to Fourth Street. It's just gonna be that way till, till we get, I think Scott and Johnny are in the process right now, their team of, of raising their their manholes and their water meters to Jerdok specs. Next. Right here, as you can see, uh, they're already putting the subways on there. Their first slide right there is, they use that little excavator right there to get the places on the edges where the, the big man can't get in there. The middle slide is some base where they're fixing to actually spread the base and then that that right side is where the base had already been, what we call a layer. As you can see, it's right next to the curb and gutter. That's the alley right behind uh, the visitor center as well, and that would be the end product. So that is, that right there is, is ready to be primed and actually have mixed. Next. This right here is a sidewalk preparation. Yes, you can see the layout of and uh, and the whole process of that, the subgrade, and then of course the forms and the end result is the finished sidewalk. They've done that. They've done a lot of curb and gutter on some parts of the alley first. And once, once they get everything leveled out to their specs, then they'll do the whole of the whole concrete work and then it will be ready for the subbase. This is a, the list of the next 13 blocks we have. As you notice, they're basically on the south side. You know, Lego and Murphy. These streets were actually paved 2012, so they've been there for a while and this now is, they need a, to be seal coated. That would buy them another eight to 10 years. So, and that's that's when you do a good subbase, like we did all those streets, we actually, we did a full reconstruction. And that's the end result of when you do good subbase work. And of course, your, your end product will last you 15, 20 years. So with us seal coating these streets, it will buy us at least another eight to 10 years. Uh, that's, that's pretty much it. That's where we are right now.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you, Eddie. And like you said, your people are all over the town. And there's a, a young lady on Fourth Street and uh, and Hound that really appreciates the work in the alley.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Any other questions for Eddie? All right, let's move forward to Chief Martin. There we go.
There we go. Everybody hear me?
Yep, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council.
Good evening.
It's been a, a very interesting run with the coronavirus. That's what I'm basically gonna touch on. Uh, the first impacts of the governor's uh, execution orders has been really interesting. Uh, needless to say, uh, with the opening of some of the businesses and I tell you, uh, I have to commend our, our retail stores or restaurants or motelers. They've really been really easy to work with and uh, got a lot of really good input from them on how to implement stuff. Uh, so one of the things that we have coming up uh, in the school district is actually working on it and doing a really nice job is May 29th, we're having the uh, the graduating seniors parade that will go through town, uh, starting at Buck Stadium and end at the high school. And that's, I tell you, the, the ISD has done a really good job on putting that, that together. Uh, the restaurants and uh, the 25% occupancy really went really smooth. Uh, now we're at 50% in the restaurants and the retail uh establishments. And, and I tell you, for the most part, everyone's still wearing their masks, still following the social, social distancing and uh, it's, it's really been, been easy at this point. Uh, but people are still apprehensive on going out and going into the public. Uh, there hasn't been a, a really big increase. For example, uh, reached out to some of the hotel motels and they've only seen approximately between a 15 and a 20% increase in uh, the amount of people that are, are staying in the motels above the shutdown. Uh, so, and again, uh, they're, they're following basically our tier plan that, that was implemented that actually they implemented and on how they sanitize the rooms and, and take care of, of those issues. Uh, and that, one thing I found interesting in talking to people is a lot of people didn't realize that the hotelers are actually the ones that came up with a lot of the ideals that are on that tier plan. And they thought it was the, I really don't know who they thought implemented that, but that's where we got a lot of the, a lot of the information to put on. I reached out to, uh, I only could get ahold of one of the gyms that opened up as of yesterday and uh, one, one, some of the things I thought it was interesting that they've implemented is they actually, whoever comes to the gym to work, it works, workout has to sign a form saying they, they are negative of the COVID-19 virus. Once they get through with their equipment, they are given the sanitizer equipment to sanitize whatever piece of machinery that they have worked out on. They also furnish gloves and masks. And they've seen an increase of about 50% of people starting to work out and they, they do it in smaller groups. They limit the size of the groups, which helps them with the uh, social distancing. And then after they work out, the, the employees at the gym comes behind them and sanitizes the equipment again. So they're doing a, a really, really good job. One thing they're not doing is, is letting just anyone come in and work out. They have to be members of that gym. So they know who, uh, you know, their regular members are and that's who they cater to at this point. Um, you know, one thing on the normal activity, you know, just don't let your guard down. Um, I think it, towards the first of the month, I think we may see an influx of more people, if you would, come into the community and, and uh, I'm just hoping that our, our citizens are being cognitive of wearing their masks and the uh, washing their hands, using the hand sanitizer and washing their hands, using the hand sanitizer and just just staying aware of the more people that come in from different areas, the higher the chances of the coronavirus in our community. And I I tell you, I think the community is still doing a jam up job. You go into the retail stores and there's still a lot of people wearing masks and and, you know, that's what it's going to take. So that's all I had. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, uh, Chief, I've got one, I've got actually two of them. There were some bars that were going to open up yesterday. What was the end result on that or?
Yes, there were two, two bars that opened yesterday and with the orders in place and some of the the legal action that wasn't taken on the governor's part, we contacted T A B C, made them aware of our findings and put it in their hands. And I spoke with them today and they've chosen not to, that I'm aware of, chosen not to take any action on it at this point.
Yeah, you know, you know, they they're they're flip flopping on these laws, you know, they they're implementing them. And it started with the lady up in in Dallas where no, no one's going to jail. So what, why even bother, you know, in my opinion, to put them, to put up the the rules if you're not going to enforce them? And and it sends a bad taste to the folks that are actually abiding by the law. You know, why is it that we know we're following that and these people aren't and they're not getting penalized?
You're you're totally correct. You know, those are other bar owners that have that have contacted me, asked why nothing was done. And I I asked them to look at the situation with the hairdresser that ended up going to jail. And then the governor come out with an order that no one could go to jail for violating his order. So it's making it really difficult for law enforcement. And it's it's kind of like they took our teeth away where we have no bite, if you would. So then T A B C on 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 this incident, the T A B C, the governor come down and said that they will, T A B C will actually handle any violations in the bars, which at that point took it out of of the city's hands, our hands and the county's hands.
Right. Exactly. I know yesterday afternoon, I got several phone calls about it. And of course, I referred over to city manager on that issue. And, you know, they were highly upset, says, you know, we're abiding by the law and they're not, they they're they're flagrantly breaking the law and and going to go ahead and open up for business.
That that's correct. And what I suggested to those bars is, you know, I'm not going to say that T A B C is not going to do something, something eventually. And I recommended to follow the governor's orders and wait to open, which is this Friday, the twenty second.
Right.
So just in case T B C does decide to act on 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 those violations.
Okay. And how about on that illegal, uh, when that, let me, let me rephrase that on the new gaming room that opened up?
The, we do have a new gaming room. It's at the O Y O, O O, O Y O facility. They are permitted and they are operating currently.
Okay, they are permitted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor, we're done.
We're done, all right.
Two hours. Well, I I hope everybody found the reports this evening to be very informative.
I'll tell you what, they were, Marcie did a fantastic job and David and Chief, everybody did great on their reports. A lot of good information out there.
Good, and it's recorded, so if anybody missed it this evening, we'll get a repurpose out on the website tomorrow as well. So and I know we still have more topics on the meeting, but thank you for your patience.
Okay, let's move over to public hearings. We don't have any and consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and supportive support material on each item and or that's been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have one item on the consent agenda this evening. It's to the approval of minutes from city council meeting on May fifth, two thousand twenty.
Okay.
So Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in second, any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carried, thank you all very much. And so now we'll move to information or discussion items. City manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we do have the quarterly readout EMS readout by Mr. Mike Scudder. And the preliminary information was included in your packets. Megan, take Mike off of mute. And we do have those slides available to do a share screen on as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mike.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city manager, Zimmerman. I have tonight three quarterly reports. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their understanding of allowing me to do these rather than on the quarterly basis due to due to my recent losses when I lost my brother in September. So I wasn't able to do uh, do this report and um, and now my recent loss with Tracy. But I do have the three reports. The, I'll start with the first one, which was from July first of two thousand nineteen to September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Quarter report. For the city and county marathon runs for the quarter, we did one hundred and eighty calls. There were one hundred and thirteen city calls, thirty seven city no transport calls, twenty seven county calls and three county no transports. Uh, most of the, uh, on the monthly breakdowns, uh, July was our busy month. We did forty eight city calls, sixteen no transports, twelve county, two county no transports for a for a total of seventy eight calls for that month. Uh, August, we did twenty eight city calls, six no transports in the city, eight county and no county no transport for a total of forty two calls. And in September, we did thirty seven calls, fifteen city no transports, seven county calls and one county no transport for a total of sixty. So that, uh, the third quarter was pretty busy for us. That was more than most of the quarters that we do with a total of one hundred and eighty. On the, uh, our air ambulance transports that we do for, uh, from Big Ben Regional Medical Center to Alpine Municipal Airport, for July, we did six. Uh, August, we did nine. Uh, September, we did seven for a total of twenty two. This is, uh, we do these from variable service, all us, uh, first flight, uh, native air, air care, elite of El Paso. And we've also had some as far away as Houston and Dallas that have come in that we, uh, transport the patients for them. On our average response times, the average city response time is three to five minutes. Of course, this is variable, a lot of it. I know there's been some instances that we've had too with the railroad track crossings. We'll get called and we get diverted, uh, pretty quick by dispatch if the police see that it's that the railroad crossing is blocked. Get there sometimes, the train didn't get the message quick enough and they've started and then we've had to turn and go back the way we came. But uh, so there's a lot of variables that are involved in that. Our county calls, of course, they're they're very variable depending on where we go. But our marathon transport time or call time is twenty eight to thirty minutes from Alpine to Marathon. You want to do questions after each quarter or just do all three quarters?
Fine.
Why don't you do all three quarters first, Mike?
Okay. Uh, let's see, the fourth quarter of two thousand nineteen, October first to December thirty first, we had a total of one hundred and seventy six calls. Ninety nine calls were city, uh, twenty eight were no transports in the city, thirty one were county calls, uh, eighteen were county no transport calls. The breakdown there for October, we did thirty nine city, eight no transport, thirteen county, six no transports in the county for a total of sixty six. In November, we did thirty eight city calls, fifteen no transports, seven county calls, six no transports. And again, sixty six for that month. In December, we did twenty two city calls, five no transports, eleven county calls and six uh, no transports for a total of forty four. Uh, for air ambulance transports, uh, in October, we did nine. Remember, we did seventeen and in December, we did fifty five. So we had a total of eighty one and a large increase for the, for December. Same on our response times. Okay, for our first quarter of two thousand twenty, for January first to March thirty first, we did a total of one hundred and twenty four calls, uh, seventy seven city calls, twenty three no transports, seventeen county calls and seven county no transports. For January, we did twenty three city, five no transports, six county and two no transports for a total of thirty six calls. In February, we did twenty four city, six city no transports, five county calls and three county no transports for a total of thirty eight. And in March, we did thirty city, twelve no transports, six county two no transports for the county for a total of fifty. Which on that was, when it started with the COVID situation in March, a lot of, uh, nationwide, a lot of services were seeing where they weren't getting as many regular calls because people were literally afraid to go to the hospital because they thought they would get, uh, get infected with COVID nineteen. So a lot of those people just stayed home. And, uh, we actually had more calls here in March than a lot of the other places have. Uh, for the air ambulance transports for the first quarter, in January, we did fifty, five zero. February, we did forty one. And March, we did twenty four for a total of one hundred and fifteen, uh, air transports for the first quarter. Let's see. Uh, some of the things just, uh, overall, that I had attached to the report was, uh, some changes in our number of employees that we have. And what we did, of course, with our list that you see there, that that's off of our Texas Department of Health, uh, list. And, uh, right now, they're, they're pretty slow at processing, changing things online. There's also two positions and leases, of course. Had to remove Mark and Tracy from the list. And I've added, uh, two, two more people, personnel that we added. And in addition to these two, oh, I've actually, uh, I've got two more part time paramedics that actually I, uh, ironically, I trained twenty years ago uh, as E M Ts and they moved on, uh, and here are better things. And now one of them's retired and he's going to work part time here for us. And another one, uh, works, uh, in San Antonio, but he wants to work part time. Uh, I've had a lot of people reach out, uh, since, uh, since the tragic loss of Tracy and, uh, everybody wants to help. Had a lot of people, you know, the brotherhood and sisterhood in EMS where they, uh, they they all want to come and help if they can. Also, uh, to the, uh, two of my E M Ts that are in paramedic school, they, uh, they're about forty percent through their class right now. These, I I believe I I reported, uh, last year before, uh, any, any of these things happened, that there was the possibility that we were going to get a, a grant from the hospital district to do this. And it did, uh, they approved it in October and I haven't, uh, seen you all since then. But, uh, two of the students, the, uh, Big Ben Regional Hospital District funded eighty percent of their training. And I, uh, I'm paying the other twenty percent. And like I said, they're about forty percent through their class right now. Uh, I have one of my other E M Ts that she finished her paramedic class. She's waiting to do her clinicals that are required for certification of the COVID nineteen. Unfortunately, put a, uh, a big grip on that where, uh, the places weren't allowing students to go in. So she's just, uh, in a stalemate right now, waiting for the, uh, for the hospitals to allow, uh, students to start doing their clinicals again. And once, uh, once she does that, then, uh, she's able to test for her paramedic certification. So that'll, uh, that'll give us three, three of our E M Ts that are up to paramedic level. I also, uh, in replacing, uh, two of the physicians, uh, right now, I've advertised for two full time physicians. I've had, uh, two paramedics, one advanced E M T and four E M Ts that, uh, have applied for the job. We've interviewed one so far. We're trying to work out how to do some of these interviews of COVID nineteen as they get a little less uh, stringent on the requirements than we can do face to face. Other than that, we're having to do like FaceTime or or just talk on the phone. Let's see, what else did I have for you? I know, uh, there had been some talk on some concerns about, uh, uh, our operational capabilities. And I, I wanted to reassure the council, as I did the, uh, the county and the hospital district, that, uh, at no time have we not had our two fully staffed ambulances. We've, we've always had that thirty five years, we've never had our ambulances staffed. And, uh, even with, uh, my recent tragedies that have happened, we, we've, uh, we've, we overcame that. Everybody, uh, all of my employees have been very good about that. We've had a just overwhelming support from people everywhere. I was asked to, uh, have the meeting with, uh, some of the county officials and with hospital district to, uh, talk about some of these things. They, uh, they weren't aware of any concerns. They'd not received any, you know, calls or anything, wanted to know if anything had changed in the service. But, uh, I think there were some concerns in the city. So, uh, I just want to assure everybody that there's no change. Everything, uh, everything is going on schedule and, um, we're, we've got people that, uh, we're fixing to hire and people that are fixing to advance to a higher level. So we're, uh, we're, we're doing okay right now. I think that's everything I have on my list. Any questions on? I'll try to answer them for you.
Yes, so Mike, this is Rick. And, uh, again, challenges you've been trying to work your way through. And I know we've been going back and forth in terms of some numbers and thoughts. When you think about staffing, and I know you've got nine employees on board right now, what number are you trying to drive towards that you believe is appropriate to be able to run two ambulances at a reasonable rate as opposed to the, you know, hey, let's all go out and and help make sure we do it because there's always that balance between on the business side and having enough people to meet your need. What is your target staffing number that you're trying to get to?
Our target staffing, uh, what we're trying to get to is a total of ten. I know, uh, when Eric was here, uh, before he left and he, you know, we worked together on that, uh, quite a bit. And, uh, that was, that was a target that we were trying to get at. And, uh, there was, I think, uh, I know two years ago, you know, the hospital district was part of the funding scheme of this and, uh, we didn't get the funding then. So two of the staff members, luckily, we had two openings, so we just didn't fill them. We didn't have to lay anybody off, so that put us down. And our, uh, each time here, I guess our goal has been to try to get to ten. Eight to me is a good number that we can, everybody. Uh, eight to me is a good number that we can, everybody uh, can have their days off. Uh, it allows for uh, there's a family emergency, somebody's sick or something like that. Eight is, is a fair number. But 10 would be, uh, 10 would be just excellent for us.
Great. A, a, and I know Jessica's been down here, I think from Colorado. What's your gating factor for her going back or is she planning to stay in Alpine?
Oh, she went back a week ago and she's coming back in a week or so. And uh, she's been doing the one good thing uh, with her uh, uh, she's doing our billing and uh, that has just uh, improved drastically. Uh, she, I, I think I talked to you and I, I talked to the county and the hospital district about that. And uh, the, it's, it is, it's really improved quite a bit how it was before. Uh, because previously, uh, you know, Mark shared that job doing billing and as a field paramedic. So now I have a person that does all the billing. We have the uh, billing company that we work with. And uh, we have fast turnaround on uh, whether we're going to get paid or denied, we pretty much know it pretty quick. So she's uh, she's doing, doing a really good job for us. And so I'm waiting to see how a, a collection model to see what, what we're looking at um, since she started with this new company and and uh, you know, give it like six months or so, so I can see uh, the trend on what we're doing. But I know uh, from the past, from what I've uh, financially on the uh, payers, they, some of them, it was very slow turnaround. And now with this uh, billing company that uh, Jessica works with, um, it's uh, it's, it's really fast. And they, luckily, this one company, they cover every spectrum of every private insurance, uh, Medicare, Medicaid, everything. So it's a one-stop shop with uh, with these guys. And she's uh, she inputs, does all the coding and gets everything for us and uh, it's been working out really well.
Okay. W, 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 what, what, what would happen if there was a requirement for more than two ambulances? How would you react to that?
If we needed more than two, um, with eight people, with 10 people, we could do it. We could add that another ambulance, but theoretically, um, I would think we'd, we'd probably have to add staff if we were going to add another, another ambulance.
Would you have a third operational ambulance?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've got four right now and three of them are licensed and the fourth one is just a reserve backup. Um, so there are, when we do um, when we get our inspections through the Department of Health, uh, they issue the permits and you can uh, you can actually swap the permits between ambulances. Uh, but the uh, what I chose to do was just to keep three as backup because we have uh, during surge times, like when we've had rodeo, football games, other special events, we've staffed three ambulances for those special events.
Okay.
Oh, one, I didn't, uh, if I can add, um, on April 25th, when they did the COVID test, they provided ambulance for standby there from nine to five in case there was an, an emergency that occurred during the testing. Luckily, there wasn't. And on our, uh, we're in good shape right now with our PPEs for uh, for any COVID-19 situation. Uh, Jessica was able, she attends the uh, the uh, rack, the rack meetings uh, through uh, through Zoom. And uh, during this COVID-19 uh, situation, the border racket of El Paso and then the uh, J-Rack, which is now the San Angelo. They're combined for the uh, COVID-19. Uh, every Tuesday, they have a meeting and uh, Connie, one of the representatives, she's uh, she's been good about getting us any supplies that we need. Uh, Jessica said aside, uh, talked to her, got us our first set. Uh, emergency management coordinator, Stephanie Elmore, she drove uh, to Fort Stockton to uh, to meet the representative and brought back uh, PPE supplies for us. And uh, currently still keeps up with that and still has. So right now with, especially with our low numbers, um, we're, we're good on uh, PPEs and for COVID. We've actually had a few calls that uh, as they were screened through dispatch, that either came in as a respiratory distress or a fever or something like this. We took uh, COVID uh, precautions for those, but uh, none were positive luckily. And uh, so far in our COVID situation, we're, 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 we're still prepared and have the appropriate PPE available. I'm sorry, I, I saw that. I missed it on there. If you, Rick, if you still had other questions on.
And thanks.
Sure.
Hey, hey, Mike, one quick question for you. Are you going after any of the uh, state level grant monies that are available for EMS operators?
You know, you know, that's one of the things that uh, Jessica's been looking at through the uh, through the rack and see what the availabilities are for that. Um, if there's anything uh, that we can get, uh, yeah, we're, we're going to do that. And one of the things of the EMC, she's also um, uh, working on uh, some of these grants that have come out uh, in regard to the COVID-19. And uh, she, she's looking at that. We're, we're making up lists for uh, things that we may need, especially for the future that going into 2021 in the event that the COVID situation does uh, resurface even worse in the fall, like they're predicting. But uh, yeah, we're looking at uh, whatever availability we can get from any of this, we're, we're surely going to try.
Ramon, did you have a question? I guess not. Mike, you've had to, you've had a very tragic year uh, with the loss of your brother and then Tracy. So I want to offer my condolences in behalf of the city council and myself. Uh, and I know, and you still continue to uh, provide good quality service for the city of Alpine and Brewster County. So my hat's off to you and to your staff for continuing the operation without missing a beat.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that very much. I, I do.
Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to item number eight then. I remember item nine. Thank you, Mike.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item nine, we just have one action item. It's to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on resolution 2020 dash 05 dash 08 to enter into a one-year or 12-month permit with West Texas Gas effective uh, June 2020 to June 2021 for the purchase of gas. It provide um, information in your packets. We were offered quotes on 12, 24, 36 and 48 months. Um, my opinion was just to sign a one-year agreement with them uh, and put the rationale in your packets on that.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, I propose that uh, city council approve resolution 2020 dash 05 dash 08 to enter into a one-year, 12-month agreement with West Texas Gas June 20th to June 21st for the purchase of gas at the price at $3.45 for MMVtu.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made in second. Any discussion?
So I, I, I just have a, a question, Eric. Uh, uh, I gather in the report, and this is more from a general information standpoint, because not everyone gets a chance to see the work you've gone through. At one point, we're looking to go compete with West Texas Gas, but given what's going on with COVID, doesn't look like there's anyone interested. That's one item. I think the bigger issue though is gas is so doggone cheap that uh, people look and say, hey, difficult to get any return on capital.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was a problem. Amarillo, uh, natural gas had approached me back in 2016 about wanting to bid on it. Uh, and then had several discussions with folks at Energy Transfer Partners as they were putting in that tap for us. Um, and really, that's all gone dry. I mean, nobody's wanting to, to put it in, in any capital because as you said, gas is pretty cheap right now and, and the prospects are, are not that that cost is going to drive up, especially with thoughts around, um, you know, do, do you have more shelter at home? Do you have less travel? Do you have, you know, all those impacts um, are, are making people a little bit uh, less willing to invest capital right now.
Yeah, and, and my sense is the price for everyone set aside natural gas is in the, in the Permian Basin, it's kind of a byproduct of uh, getting oil out of the ground until oil gets back in the $70 a barrel range. It's going to be tough for anyone to make that investment. So my, my view is a one-year uh, lease uh, agreement certainly makes sense.
Yep, absolutely. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay, we'll have city council members' comments and answers. And I'll start with, where is she at? She disappeared on me. Maria Curry.
I don't really have a comment, but I appreciate all of the uh, updates that we got from everybody. That was a lot of work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Ramon.
I concur with Maria. Excellent reporting and excellent, great work that's being, that's going on out there. Kudos first of all to these, the streets true for the city of Alpine. The streets are looking great. And um, also would like to comment on, again, on the Economic Development Initiative. I think that's a it's a way of looking forward to doing some great things for the benefit of the city in the future. And I look to for good outcomes in that area. And um, I'd like to reemphasize something that Chief Martin commented on in saying that now that business is opening up and it's travel time and there's a good chance we're going to get a lot of people coming out from some of the major cities in, in the state of Texas. So to all, you know, be cautious, be safe.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Betty. Okay, then we'll move over to Lucy Escobedo.
I was really happy with the reports.
Okay, and Rick?
Yeah, so, no, I, I, I just want to echo the comments about terrific reports and the great work underway. You know, I've uh, I've been spending a fair amount of time in Southern California, but I have been in and out of Alpine. Most of you would not see me because I am complying with the rules that say stay away for 14 days. So I've not been in any of the stores, any of the shops, but I have gone back and forth you know, between the airport and my house. Uh, but I can get out in my own vehicle and be socially distanced. And it's great to see the great work going on with, what Eddie and the team is doing, what's going on at the parks. Uh, and, and also I want to uh, compliment the, the work that the chief has done. You know, relative to, to working through some very, very difficult challenges, uh, particularly with, with compliance to the COVID activities. Uh, you know, it's great to see uh, so the grant work that's uh, that's underway and uh, looking forward to getting a lot of those uh, uh, put in place, particularly as we work towards the budget cycle uh, coming up. And uh, you know, another uh, terrific meeting with all of the, the summer reports. And I share the same concern that Ramon mentioned. You know, it's really about uh, being safe and social distancing. Tough, I think a very tough decision relative to the pool, but I think it's the right one. And uh, hopefully we'll continue to uh, to keep COVID out of Alpine and we can keep our community safe. Uh, but as the tourists start coming through, uh, my fear, like many of us, is we're going to see something pop up. But just hope when it does, we can keep it minimized.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great, great comments. Uh, I wanted to thank the council and Eric, great job. You put together a great team. From grant writers, you know, to uh, the streets, uh, to code enforcement. Everybody's doing a fantastic job and, and we see light at the end of the tunnel here. You know, we see progress every time I drive around the street. I've been seeing the streets that are being resurfaced, the alleyways, uh, compliments. I've got out the other day and walked around and like I said, particular lady, uh, I stopped to talk to her and Rick, you know who she is.
Yep.
Uh, and she says, great job that city is doing out here, greatly improving the, the face of Alpine. So fantastic job that everybody out here as a team is, is working on and we're moving forward. And again, you know, be safe, you know, people are getting complacent. You know, I go to the store like every other day, walk around and I see it, quite a number of the younger folks actually not wearing a mask. I know it's not mandatory, but it's for my safety as well as their safety. And in order to keep the virus out of here, we all got to do our part, you know? And people look at you kind of strange because you're wearing the mask, but you know what? I'd rather be safe than be dead. It's the way I look at it. So great job, team. Uh, I think uh, I'll entertain a motion now.
Uh, so move to adjourn.
Okay, second. I don't, okay, there we go. Okay, and it's not debatable. So meaning adjourned. Thank you all very much. Great meeting.